Thank you for coming to the regular meeting of the RTM. This is October ninth, 2024. Time is seven oh three and I'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the roll call from the town clerk.
Representative Adams. Burrell. Casper. Din Shinbrauk.
Here.
Dudden.
Here.
Fitzgerald.
Here.
Fox.
Gardner A.
Here.
Gardner M.
Here.
Gibbs.
Here.
Good. Hume. Kayden. Keep. Luck. Massett. Matter. McElroy. Norman. Aubrey. Perella. Powers K. Powers S. Pulaski.
Pulaski.
Here.
Umrits.
Here.
V C Williams. Watson. Whitney.
Here.
Umwas.
Here.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. All right, there are twenty-seven members present, so we can declare a quorum. On to agenda item B, moment of silence, salute to the flag. Please stand if you're able. Representative Hume, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, with God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda item C, approval of the minutes from the September eleventh, 2024 meeting. If there are no additions, revisions, deletions, or omissions, we will approve the minutes. Very well, minutes are approved. All right, public petitions, agenda item D. This is the portion of the RTM agenda where the RTM welcomes comments from the public. Each presentation should be limited to no more than five minutes or less as directed by the moderator, and if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be limited to matters pertinent to Groton. The moderator or members through the moderator shall ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentations. Responses may be given by the moderator and/or by the town manager. Individuals who state their name and address for the record. If you wish to speak virtually, please register by emailing council@grotoncht.gov no later than four P M. on the day of the meeting. Is there any members of the public that wish to speak? Is there anyone on Zoom? All right. Nothing, town manager? Okay, thank you. All right, so we move along. Our receipt of communications, just to notify, Representative Hubbard, Johansson, and Watson notified that they would not be here today. I did speak with Representative Watson. He is home resting and recuperating, so it's good to see him back. I'm also happy to see Representative Powers K. here, so glad you're healing and ready to serve. Thank you. I received an email from one of our representatives regarding a volunteer activity. I just wanted to note for the record that the Riverfront Children's Center is looking for community volunteers to help create a mural design by Meredith Andrews from the Mystic Art Museum. You can donate your time Saturday, October nineteenth between nine A M. and five P M. to help create an outdoor art space for the children to use daily. No art experience necessary. You will be, you will receive guidance and materials necessary to help bring our mural to life. So anybody who is interested here from this body, I'm going to refer you to Rep. McElroy, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. Also want to give props to Rep. Good for going out and helping with the bikeway trail over at Quadchester. I think you were over at Groton Beautification at one point cleaning some stuff out with a unified effort around Mystic, so again, thank you all for doing that. I have received notification from the Groton Beautification Committee that they are looking for more members to get their hands dirty. I know Rep. Aubrey is involved in that a little bit as well, so anybody who's interested in participating, great. If you want to be a part of the committee, even better. So you can reach out to me or Rep. Aubrey on anything like that. So, yes, thank you. One other note, I was honored to attend a meeting down at Subvets in Groton on Wednesday. Our district rep, U.S. Congressman Courtney, came down to speak to one of our Groton institutions, City of Groton Police Chief William Scorano, who served in World War Two on Sea Lion, Sub. Three One Five. They had a video meeting so that they could put his testimony to the public record and go in the Library of Congress. So once I find out when that's going to be put out there, I'll share it with the group. If there is any member of the community here that would like that same afforded to them, if they are a World War Two vet, reach out to Representative Courtney and they will take your testimony for the record as well, and it will be put in the Library of Congress. All right, I'm going to turn it over to reporter, the town manager, financial report, Mr. Burt.
There's been a request for the Board of Ed to go first.
Oh, if it's okay with you.
I'll be here all night.
All right, so, all right, we're going to, if it's okay with the group, we're going to go out of order and we're going to jump to agenda item H, report of the superintendent of schools.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Superintendent Susan Austin. I'm happy to be here. We had a really good beginning of the school year, and everybody's back at work doing really good work. So we're here to talk to you a little bit about the different grants that we receive, the grants, competitive grants that we actually are constantly monitoring. And I brought Shannon Weigel, who is our grants coordinator, and she has really done an amazing job, and it's really a team effort. She brings people together. We really think of the ideas. We share it with the board, you know, as soon as we've got the ideas. And of course, we're going through the approval process. You won't be voting tonight. We'll come back and we'll meet with the Education Department, and then we'll bring you the grant. But we thought you might like to see the various grants that we have received, and Shannon's going to take us through some of these slides.
So, good evening, everyone. As Susan said, I'm the grant writer and facilitator for the district, so I specifically work on project grants. So just in case you weren't aware, so project grants, as compared to formula grants, are typically competitive grants awarded to school districts to pilot or implement a project-based program. For our school district, they're typically awarded by either the federal government, the state, or sometimes even private foundations, local businesses, or corporations. And they can range in the amount from five thousand, like from Pfizer's Community Grant Program, to five million. That was a grant that we received a couple years ago from the Department of Education. Here are some examples of some entities that we've received grants from. Some of our larger grants have come from the Department of Defense, which is marked as DODIA there, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the Department of Ed, as I mentioned, several different state entities, and private funders too, including local companies such as Chelsea Groton Bank and Groton Utilities. Some of our largest projects, some of our largest grants have come from the Department of Defense Education Activity Program. So Groton is unique in that we are eligible for this significant grant program because of our connection to the Naval Subbase and the Coast Guard Academy, because we have a large percentage of military students. So we currently have three, these grants are all five, these projects are all about five-year projects, and the awards tend to range from seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to one point two five million. We have three projects under, well, we have four now as of last week, but these are three that are currently underway at different stages, in their second year, fourth year. These include one, the first one there that's focused on career pathways, another one that's focused on world language, and another that's focused on our elementary magnet schools. These grants primarily support professional development for all of our teachers in the district. We use them to buy new materials for the classroom, new curriculum sometimes, even new equipment. And as I mentioned, last week, we learned we were the recipient of our eighth DODIA grant. This one will start as soon as it's approved by the town and RTM, and it's another one point two five million dollar grant. And this will support our International Baccalaureate Program at the high school, which is something, again, that's very unique to Groton. We're one of only three districts in the entire state that offer the IB program. It'll pay for all the professional development related to that, so it doesn't need to come out of the district budget. And it'll also support three elementary-level tutors for the life of the grant. Oh, and, yep.
I'm really proud of this grant because it really does continue our work with International Baccalaureate. Some people think that it's just for a select few, but the IB program here in Groton, the middle-years program, which we took on with a five million dollar grant through Learn for our magnetizing the middle school, is one that we trained everyone, so every teacher has this background, and this will just continue their education. New teachers coming in, you know, professional learning is a key ingredient. You can almost equate it exactly to student performance and growth. They go hand in hand. So, and it can be expensive, so it's something I don't have to put in the operating budget for the next five years, which is a really good thing. But the middle-years program is for all students, and I just read an article, and it says, "All Means All." It's an equity issue. We want all of our children to be able to participate in these college and career readiness. It's so important in Groton because careers are basically where the action is. We want them to find what they really love and what they're good at so that they really will connect. We had two students who did Signing Day for Electric Boat and got their hard hat last year. Couldn't have been more proud, and I want to make that a factorial thing. We had E.B. coming through just this week. They've come and they've supported us. They're actually, you know, helping us with getting some of those, what are they doing? The scoreboards for the fields. So they're actually donating scoreboards for the field. But the best thing is there's something called a shop, and I don't know if any of you went to Fitch High, or you knew about the shop, but the shop kind of closed down, like people at one point didn't think that was important. So we're looking at this as an opportunity for a manufacturing center, and E.B.'s going to help. They're going to help train teachers, they're going to help train the children, they're going to help, we already have a boat program, and they're going to help us even with grants to get the equipment in there that we need, bring the robotics team back. So that's just one minor highlight of all this great work. You can see why, forty-four years later, I love this job. I mean, this is one of the most exciting things when you can see kids, and we've doubled our numbers in those kids taking A.P., IB, UConn credit, and eleven hundred-plus students last year were enrolled in those top-level courses in their eleventh and twelfth grade in classes of two fifty to three hundred. That means they're taking multiple courses. So it is like, and all kids, I mean, all means all. And so they're doing it, and they have to pick a pathway as a freshman, and they could change their pathway. They might change it through life, you know? But definitely, it's a very exciting place to be in Groton, so I just wanted to add that part. This new grant is really exciting to me.
So just wanted to mention a few other initiatives that we have going on in the district. Again, all students have access to these programs. One is our Farm-to-School Program, which was launched by Ernie Kochmeyer and his team with the Food Service Department, initially through a partnership with Food Corps. This program has become so popular that we were able to raise additional funds through the USDA and through the State's Department of Agriculture. We now have gardens at each school, every school. Several schools have industrial-sized greenhouses. We have a hydroponic center up at the high school, and we're about to have an additional sort of standalone hydroponic center. We were one of only three that were selected by the state. That's going to be located over at Central Office, that students from across the district can come and tour, and it's also going to provide all of our leafy greens for the district. We've also, grants support a lot of our after-school programs. So we now have a tuition-free after-school program at the middle school, and we have applied for a second one for the high school. Because of the program at the middle school, we were eligible for special American Rescue Plan funds that allowed us to buy a bunch of supplies and equipment for the high school's drama program, the photo club, the ceramic. We just bought a new kiln, so the high school is really equipped now with a bunch of equipment for all the kids to enjoy. And, yeah, the American Rescue Plan did provide funding for some additional grants, including, that allowed us to expand our early child, early college experience courses up at the high school. That was the dual-credit expansion grant. We piloted a new program at the middle school and in ninth grade focused on high-dose tutoring in math, and we were also able to purchase our new reading curriculum with the Right to Read funding opportunity. So some groups have been curious to know how proposals are developed, so I just put this up here in case you had any questions, but basically, the important thing to know is that anytime we apply for a grant, many people are involved in that development. It isn't just one person's idea. We pull together many different stakeholder groups, teachers, principals, parents have input, we distribute surveys, we collect as much information as possible, and a lot of thought goes into each of these projects. And that's about it. Happy to, yep, okay.
I think one of the best things about these grants is they're sustainable, they're five-year grants, and if there's any position in the grant, at the end of the five years, it goes away. So every DODIA grant, there's an expectation of a project director, an evaluator, so we are always looking at student data. But this puts an eagle eye in doing quarterly reports, annual reports, to watch, to see how our kids are growing, and to see if our efforts are really worthwhile. And I'm happy to say, this is grant number, actually, nine from the federal government, but eight for DODIA, and in every single case, we have seen significant growth for kids. And also, the growth might be just in doubling enrollment kind of thing, like kids participating more, which is also really good news. It doesn't just have to be a number on an S-Bac test. So we're looking at everything, attending school because they're more interested. So these are the things that we're really looking at, but they do go away. In this, for instance, there's the three tutors, there's some stipend money for leadership for these programs, but it does go away at the end of the five years, which is twenty
Thank you, Ms. Weigel and Superintendent Austin, for giving us this presentation. The only question that I have is, have, has Board of Ed reached out to our state representation, state senator, legislators about any grants that we might not have looked for? Or unaware of?
Right, yeah, so we have regular contact with our state reps and senator, and we're always on the lookout, and, yeah, they do send us legislative updates. We just got one recently, so, yeah, we're always combing all those resources and communicating with them about that.
And as a superintendent, I'm involved with ASCD and also CAE, which is the Board of Ed organization. We actually host the annual workshops or conferences right at the Mystic Marriott, so it's very convenient. But that, a big piece of that is legislation, and there's usually two or three meetings of legislators with superintendents in different school districts so that we really attend and we find out more. But certainly, Chris Conley and Heather and Andre give us phone calls when they, you know, like we, I think you might have even sent, or John Burt sent something on some of these electric vehicles. So, thank you.
All right. Is there any comments, discussion from the group to the superintendent? Representative Aubrey, followed by Keep.
Thanks for coming. I have a question that isn't pertaining to this, and so if you don't have the answer, you can let us know another time, but I remember a few years back, the truancy numbers were up, and I believe there were some people that came, were coming on or adjusting staff or something like that, that was actually going to be working on that problem. Did that ever come to be?
I would say that attendance has been a really big issue with COVID, some of it due to illness, some of it due to kids not wanting to come in, you know, and even with social emotional health as well as physical health. But we have steadily been getting back. We're not where we were before COVID, but we dropped three, it's actually better if you have less numbers when it's chronic absenteeism, so our numbers are getting lower and lower, which is a good thing. But we continue to have all kinds, we just talked about it as a principal administrative group, about ways that we can encourage the kids to come in. And I really do believe that when they're invested and they're excited about their education, and also, it's not just the education during the day, but it's the sports and the activities and the after-school, all those things that build a school community are important to kids, and when they really thrive in that environment, they want to be there. So we are working continuously with that.
But there never was anybody that was appointed that was like, if there was a, you could observe a child knowing that there's a problem at home, and we had talked about somebody actually reaching out to the parents.
So we did a lot of, we do that, a lot of that. We bring teams will go, whether it's the principal, assistant principal, it could be a social worker. They go to the home when we aren't seeing kids, and they work with the families, so having those social workers in the schools is really essential, and we do, we do that on a regular basis when there's a problem.
Thank you.
Representative Keep?
Sure, thank you. First of all, I think these grants are really important, and I want to congratulate you for getting them, and I think anything you do to get students to want to come and engage, obviously, is a really good thing. And one of my questions was going to be about absenteeism, but also, how about the national assessment of educational progress? Are we making progress there? Because I know those numbers went down with COVID, not just here, obviously, everywhere. I just wondered, are we bouncing back there or not?
So NAEP is interesting, the way they do their assessments. You kind of get selected, and you might get selected for fourth grade and fourth-grade math. So. and you might get selected for fourth grade and fourth-grade math. So the results really go into looking at it nationally. They don't necessarily give it back. But looking at the S-Back results, again, we had performed so well in 2019 that they tried to graduate us from the Alliance districts, which would have cost us $25 million. So I actually, with our representatives, who did a really good job to keep us in that cohort, we do the best out of that cohort. We're one of the best, us and Vernon. But there's a lot of support that goes with that, even some funding. We got some last-minute funding that was categorical for us, $225,000 this summer, when I really needed it. And we could use it for some of these initiatives. So it's not a bad thing. But we've really progressed, and our numbers aren't back to pre-COVID numbers, but they're getting there. And, you know, DODIA is a great thing because they monitor student performance, not only disaggregating the military kids. And military kids, I have to tell you, after nine of these have done better than the average bear, and they've really done well. But we look at all, we disaggregate in all kinds of ways, with our high-needs kids, all of our kids. So we're looking at girls and boys and how they're performing in all areas. And this really keeps us honest. You know, there's a lot of work to this evaluation, but it's worth it.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Representative Powers S.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a quick question about the grant funding. Is it included in the overall budget for the school?
So at budget time, what we do is, when we put the budget book together, we show you the competitive grants and the categorical grants. There are some grants that come, like Impact Aid. It usually comes about $4 million, and we really saw an increase this year. So really, looking at that, what comes through the town, some of this revenue comes directly to the town, like ECS is $25 million. And we really were up above $6 million this year in Impact Aid. So that really helps relieve the taxpayer. So those are sources of revenue that go into the budget. But these competitive grants are in addition to. You can't supplant the operation budget with them. Thou shalt not supplant. So they're additional, but we absolutely want you to see all of the ones that come in, because they do give us a lift. And in a sense, you know, it does offset some costs for professional learning, if I've got a grant that's doing a lot of professional learning. I don't need to have as much in my operating budget.
Okay. And as far as the grant money goes towards certain programs, are they existing programs, or are they new programs?
So we really have done a good job continuing the mission we've been on. So they've been existing programs. Some of them, in the beginning of time, like our first literacy grant was a new program, the math grant, we had some new programs. That was back in 2014, 15, and 2016. But in the most case, now that we've done so many of them, and I can do, we can do them each year for five years. So it's not like I have to wait five more years to be able to apply. We can apply again next year. So what we've really been doing in the past three of them is sustaining the programs that we've had and growing it.
So the additional staff stays on when the grants leave, or no?
No, not necessarily. No, you would have a different program director, a different, you know, you could have a different evaluator. They only allow a single evaluator to do two of your DODIA grants at a time. And that's usually a college professor or someone in the field of expertise that your, you know, your project is, that would do the evaluation.
So there's no added staff, basically. Once the grants are gone...
Once the grants are gone, the grants are gone.
We're just trying to clear some things up. Thank you.
Well, just like we lost a lot of the tutors because of the RBESR, so we've put some of those in some of these five-year grants.
I think you're understanding what we're trying to decipher here, okay?
Oh, yeah, I do. I understand it.
It's not something simple for all of us to read your budget book. And some members are very new. So I think questions have to be asked in order to have a full explanation as to where the biggest budget in the town is, the education budget.
Yeah, understood.
Thank you.
Got it.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Yes, Council Mayor, you are an ex-officio member. You will be recognized.
Thank you. I have just one question about the robotics program. What is the health of that right now?
So the robotics program is really still going strong. And we have two coaches, one is a staff member and one is a parent. And they've done a really fabulous job, the kids have. I would say that they're still in Pleasant Valley, because that's the space they're using. So I really want them to come home to Fitch High School, to that shop, that manufacturing center. So we're really working with EB on that, and it's, I'm really excited about that. But I want them to get back into the school and have that space so that they can continue that work.
Yes, thank you. I'd like that idea. I'd like to see them back at the school.
And so I do these weekly updates. I don't know if any of you, they're kind of wordy. I've been told. But they do have some pictures. But I definitely, you know, whenever I have information, like if the robotics has the breakfast, you can come and see it. So any of our community endeavors, I'd love to get you into the schools. If you just want to take a tour, I've been inviting you, I want to take you to the eighth-grade floor, so you can see from the Thames River to the Mystic River on that new Groton Middle.
I've seen some of it, but not up that high.
Yeah. So definitely, if you'd ever like to come and visit, they are beautiful buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My pleasure. Any other questions from the membership? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll see you next month.
Appreciate it.
Chairman Massett's going to get the referral for that, and the Education Committee will meet, and we will then vote on the DODEA grant in next November of this meeting. Thank you. All right, we're going to reverse now. We're going to moonwalk back to item F. Report of the Town Manager, Mr. Burke.
Good evening. Financials first. The preliminary fund balance as of June 30, 24, unaudited, is approximately $40.6 million. If you look at the 25 budget, that's 26.1% of the budget. The council is analyzing the appropriate fund balance level. We started those discussions last night. General contingency budget for 25 was appropriated at $250,000. It is now at $245,894, so just down by about $4,000. Capital Reserve Fund as of June 30, 24, unaudited, is $691,000. Moving into the update, speaking earlier of the American Rescue Plan Act, we have approximately $700,000 currently that's not allocated to anything, mostly because the Groton Housing Authority turned back quite a bit of money. We have to have that allocated by the end of this year, or else we lose it. So you'll be seeing that come through soon. The council, I think, is going to start talking about that next, or the next COW on the 29th. We're also, should be interesting, at least to me, on November, likely, tentatively, November 12, we're going to have MDG, our third-party health administrator, come in, and our human resources director to go over what, over our current self-funded healthcare plan, and talk about any other options that are out there. And then they're going to do the same thing, MDG, with the Board of Ed that same week, and talk about healthcare options. So we'll see if anything comes out of that. Always looking to see if there's any money to be saved. A little bit of Parks and Rec and Public Works updates. We've been getting a lot of questions about this gate rink at the, by Thrive 55 in the library. It's almost done. We're just waiting for the lights to be installed. Everything else has been done. They should be installed very soon. If you haven't seen the presentation on the Athletics Field Task Force, that was given a couple weeks ago. It is taped and on our GMTV YouTube. It's worth while. Comments from that, feedback from that presentation will be incorporated into the next round. And there'll be another public presentation coming up with that updated information. And essentially, the same thing with Complete Streets 2. It's taped. You can watch that and those comments. And there's 500 surveys, completed over 500, that'll be incorporated. Roof for the libraries going out to bid, or just went out to bid last week, due November 7. Hopefully, it comes in. You never know on bids right now. We did rebid. If you remember, the police locker room went significantly over when we bid last time. We just rebid it, and they did come in within budget, so that's good. We've had trouble finding CDL-licensed drivers for the plow trucks, but Steel Workers Union worked with us and are going to, we're creating a system for current maintainers to get their CDLs that we pay for, and they can move up into the position. So win-win for everybody. And then we just finally found a town engineer, which is essential. We've been falling behind on some of these engineering projects. One of the first things I work on is trying to get the Quaker Farm Road Bridge back, kind of get it past the finish line. We're wrapping up easements, or doing easements right now on it. The hope is to bid it out by the end of this year. So we shall see. School property sales, RFPs went out, the RFP for Groton Heights went out a week or two, about two weeks ago, due on December 2. And in the next month or two, the Pleasant Valley will be sent out. We didn't want them too overlapping because of the amount of work involved, so that'll be a little while later. And the planning staff is going to be giving an update to the council at their October 29 COW. But as I think of that, I should have them coming. It's been a while since you've had economic development updates, so I'll ask them soon to come here. And that is all I have. Welcome to ask any questions.
Thanks, Mr. Burke. I'll open up the floor for any discussion or questions to the Town Manager. All right, seeing none, I'm going to move on. Thank you so much.
And I will send out the written report like I usually do, later tonight or tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, on to agenda item. Well, we, there is nothing for economic development, correct?
No.
Okay, so committee reports, Community Development and Services, no committee, no report?
No meeting, no report.
All right, after that. Education, you've got your tasks to do now, so we'll get your report next meeting. Finance, I'll recognize Representative Powers S., Chairman of the Finance Committee. We have two agenda items that we have to enact on today, or this evening. If you want to do them one at a time, that's fine, and then we can approve the minutes at the end as presented.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We had a special finance meeting. Call to order was at 7:04. Representatives Norman, Gardner, Pulaski, Umbrus, and Dean Schimbrot, myself were present. Representative Fritchie was excused. Our first item of business was 3.12024-797-3, the Madvac litter vacuum vehicle. Representative Powers asked Representative Pulaski to read the resolution into the record, and it was seconded by Representative Gardner. I'm going to ask Representative Pulaski to read it into the record now, please.
Resolution to approve funds from the miniature liquor bottle NIPS fund and the fleet fund balance for the purchase of a litter vacuum vehicle. Whereas, the Department of Public Works has identified the need to purchase a litter vacuum vehicle to clean roadside litter along town and state roads and sidewalks. And whereas, the cost of this vehicle is approximately $100,000, and whereas, the purchase of such a vehicle is an allowed use of NIPS funds, and whereas, the Town Council had previously authorized the use of $37,906.98 in NIPS funds received in 2023 to be used towards the purchase of a litter vacuum vehicle, and whereas, the town will receive additional NIPS funds in 2024, and whereas, the town has a fleet fund balance, now there be it resolved that the Town Council approves using $37,906.98 from NIPS funds received in fiscal year ending 2024, $37,453.55 in fiscal year ending 2025 NIPS funds, and the remaining $24,639.47 from the fleet fund to purchase the litter vacuum vehicle, and to refer the item to the RPTM per Rule 6.5.3. And I move that the resolution be approved.
Okay, motion was moved by Representative Pulaski, seconded by Representative Good. Do you have Director Hanover here to discuss anything that we may have questions about? Representative Massett, followed by Good.
I noticed that we are taking the funds from three separate pots. My concern is that we are setting a precedent. We're not going to start doing that. If somebody needs something, I'll be like, oh, we have a little bit here, we have a little bit there. We're not going to do that, please.
No, and it's not exactly three funds. We get about, the town gets about $75,000 in NIP funds each year, coming in two pots. They've already dedicated some out of that NIPS fund already, so it's just more coming, it's the same fund, just more coming into it. It may have even been received by now. The intent has been for a while to get this. It's just, we have so many complaints and requests for trash along the roads, we wanted to speed it up. But no, that is not the intent.
Thank you.
Representative Good?
Thank you. I just wanted to suggest, or hopefully, we were cleaning up along the boardwalk on the Paquann River, and it's really hard to clean over the side. I was just wondering if that would be able to fit in the boardwalk and be able to clean over on the side of that.
I don't believe it'd be able to fit in the existing boardwalk, but we do have a Community Challenges Grant that we got, a DECD grant. We're going to be replacing that boardwalk. And as part of that, we're looking at widening it. So at that point, it would be able to fit down there.
Any other questions? Representative Obrey?
I've got a sore knee. I'm going to sit down. Thank you. Will there be a schedule as to where you'll be working as you go around and cover the area?
Yeah, I can't say we're going to have a schedule right off the bat. We'll probably hit, you know, the worst areas that we see, which is long, like mostly the state roads, 184, Route 1, Route 12. You know, this is kind of a pilot program to see how this thing is going to work. And we reached out to some other municipalities that are using them. They say they work great. They use them all year round. They like them. But, you know, it's going to be kind of, play it by ear, see how we do. And then, you know, we probably will develop a schedule to hit some areas, like, you know, we sweep downtown Mystic once a week. We sweep other areas, you know, more frequently, you know, as far as the roads go. So I imagine we'll be hitting some hotspots more frequently than others.
If I might, I can appreciate the fact that downtown Mystic has to be done more, because there have been a lot of complaints. I'm sure John's pretty tired of hearing them. But I don't want it to be a downtown Mystic event. It's far the town, and I'd like to see it throughout the town. And that's why I would like, as you get to where you're comfortable with it, that we would be able to see where it's going to be and when. I understand you've got to kind of get used to it, and I understand it's important for Mystic, but there are other areas in what I call Groton proper that needs attention.
Yeah, like, as I said, you know, Route 1 and Route 12, I know. Route 117 also has some issues. I mean, you know, anywhere in town. But no, it's not going to be just used in Mystic. It'll be used all over Groton.
Oh, I appreciate that. Thank you. I think it's a great idea, and I'm very much in favor of it. But I'm keeping my eye on you.
So the committee discussion with Director Hanover, he explained the funding revenues and the streams for the project. And the all-terrain vehicle, the cost was $100,000. What it was going to clean was roads and sidewalks. The funding source, we just discussed, it was from the NIP fund. And basically, the committee asked a variety of questions about staffing needs, whether they needed CDLs, the areas that it was going to work in, and the need for more than one vehicle. If this is going to work out. So Chairman Powers asked for a vote for $100,000 for the MadlitterVac vehicle. Six in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. Our next item on the budget was...
Hold on, we have, we're going to deal with this item first. So is there any further discussion on item 2024-797, Madvac Litter Vacuum Vehicle? Representative Perella?
Just a comment. I'm very happy to see this. As you know, we tried some different projects when I was on the Beautification Committee, and it was somewhat successful. I know Mr. Burke was excited when I saw him in the store one day, and that we were getting some volunteers. So I'm really, really excited about this, and I think it's really, really going to help the town. We got to start small, but we got to use those funds, and we got to clean up our act in this town.
Any other discussion? Very well seen. And I'll call for a vote on 2024-797, Madvac Litter Vacuum Vehicle. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no.
Okay, never mind. I was just going to ask for some help.
Rep. Schimbrot, you're hot-miked.
I'm not. You snapped at me. I thought, I guess...
Tell Stevie to stop it. All those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item, sir.
Next item was the cannabis tax revenue dispersment. Chairman Powers asked Representative Gardner to read into the record the resolution. It was seconded by Representative Pulaski. I'm going to ask Representative Norman to read the resolution into this record. Thank you.
Great. Resolution to authorize dispersment of cannabis municipal tax payments for FYE 2024. Whereas Connecticut Public Act 21-1 allows for the sale of recreational cannabis, and whereas a 3% municipal tax is collected on such sales and given to the local municipality, and whereas the funds received may be used for certain purposes, including, one, streetscape improvements and other neighborhood developments in communities where cannabis retailer, hybrid retailers, or micro cultivators are located; two, education programs or youth employment and training programs in the municipality; three, services for individuals living in the municipality who released, who were released from DOC custody; four, mental health or addiction services; five, youth services bureaus and municipal juvenile review boards; and six, community civic engagement efforts. And whereas the Town of Groton does currently have recreational cannabis retailers either under operation or in the process prompting discussion on use of any municipal tax revenue received, and whereas Always Home is a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit whose mission is to address the needs of eastern Connecticut's homeless and at-risk families, and whereas Always Home provides a variety of services, including employment and work skills training and wheels-to-work, among other programs, and whereas the Town of Groton has an ongoing relationship with Always Home, with the town routinely providing limited funding through its annual budget, and whereas the Town Council finds that providing additional funds to Always Home would be a benefit to our Groton residents, now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council authorizes $53,250.64 from FYE 2024 cannabis revenues to be awarded to Always Home, to be used solely for Town of Groton residents, and be it further resolved that the rules, the requests be forwarded to the RTM for consideration via Rule 6.5.3. So moved.
Second. All right, motion was moved by Representative Norman, seconded by Representative Good. I'll open up the floor for discussion on this item. Yes, Representative O'Bri?
I was just going to say, I won't vote tonight because I'm on the board for Always Home, but I'd like to speak in favor of this. It's absolutely phenomenal organization. It helps many, many people. I'm very happy that John was able to suggest that this might be a good place for this money. You will not be sorry with the fact that you're doing it. And if anybody has an interest, you can get in touch with Trish Cunningham. She'd be happy to explain anything you want to know, but they really do keep families in a home. Thank you very much.
Yes, Town Manager Burke?
It wasn't me who suggested it. They actually reached out to counselors, but I am very supportive.
Thank you.
I believe, based on the record, it was Counselor Parker who proposed that this app? Go to this?
All right, I'll take it a lunch.
Any other discussion on this main motion on the floor? All right, seeing none. Call for vote on 2024-827, Cannabis Tax Revenue Dispersment. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those, all those opposed, please say no. Abstentions, just a note for the record, that Representative Frickman arrived at 7:49. Okay, motion, any non-votes? Any non-votes?
Abstentions.
Or abstentions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, abstaining is only. So the motion carries 27 in favor, none opposed, no abstentions. One abstention, excuse me. All right, thank you. Can we just approve the minutes for the meeting?
Yeah, like, we're going to read the discussion piece to our minutes.
If you'd like to, yes.
I would like to.
Thank you.
Manager Burke explained that could have been the work that Always Homes provides to the Town of Groton. The revenue sources for this resolution, which it comes from, which is the taxes associated with cannabis, in the Town of Groton. The $53,250 was left over from funds from FYE 2024. The committee asked about a permanent shelter for residents, the housing crisis, along with the two, the two work, the Wheels-to-Work program, the work skills training, the next topics. We've talked a lot about the NIP tax fund and the cannabis fund, as to how they both are resources to revenue for community nonprofits. Chairman Powers asked for the vote of $53,250.64 from FYE 2024 cannabis revenues. Six in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions, and we adjourned at 7:18. Thank you. Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, motion was moved by Chair Powers, seconded by Perella. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, call for vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? You don't have to abstain on this one, Rep. O'Bri. All right, unanimous passage of the minutes. Thank you. All right, moving on. Aye, six, public safety. No committee, no report. Rep. Perill? All right, Dean Schimbrot, no committee, no report. Thank you. Chair Watson, no committee, no report, or for rules or recreation. Moves on to item J, liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Representative O'Bri, I'll recognize you for the economic development piece of this liaison.
Well, I guess I could do both. I was going, yeah, yeah. You're right, you're right. Sorry.
I've been told that on occasion.
I'll speak to your wife.
Touche.
I just wanted to mention that my understanding is I have, that we have a new director. Is that what it would be, John?
Yes.
For economic development?
I kind of told the manager, under John Ryder.
And I think we'd realize if we were to invite her to come to a meeting and meet some of us, and we could meet her, and so it would be a way to comfortably be able to reach out. And they are also looking for members. So if you care about the economics of this town, which I hope you all do, suggest to people that they might be in touch, if I'm correct, with the manager, and the manager makes the appointments for the, for the committee.
Okay, so, and how many spots are available? Town Manager Burke in that commission?
I can't say where off the top of my head. I think there's at least a couple.
Okay. And I put that out to the community. If there's anyone interested in helping out with the economic development of Groton, please contact the Town Manager and fill out an application.
And just to mention, the new manager's name is Corinne Piazza, and good idea to have her come here soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another liaison report for you? Are you now the chair of the Beautification Committee again?
It was that way.
Yes.
But not for long. I've got enough. But I don't want it to fail, so I'm trying to keep things moving. Cindy did a marvelous job, and she remembers so many things, so it's a great loss when she does leave. But we want to keep the committee going. We have some people that are very, very anxious to try to work on downtown Groton, Groton proper, as I call it.
Understood. All right, are there any liaison reports? Representative Wells, do you have anything from the Gulf Committee?
I could say no meeting, no report, but there is a bit of information. Am I doing all right? Much better. There is a bit of information on the, on the last meeting, because you may recall that the revenues were getting flat, and they're complaining that, the complaint was that members were soaking up the tee times. They get a day, they get an early, a day early to request a tee time, and they're sort of crowding out those people who are paying, paying full, full, full rate. And so they put, they had put it to the Parks and Rec Commission, wanting to limit the number of memberships that we sell, and got turned down because they felt adding the memberships was just keeping it more inclusive. My opinion is that it's probably making it less inclusive because there's fewer opportunities for people who aren't members. And we have a number of constituencies, the subbase, Enable, the military people, who aren't, aren't here all the time. And even Pfizer and EB, they have people that come in for short periods of time for special projects, and we need to have the course available for the general public. So we'll know more about it at the next Gulf Advisory Board meeting.
Thank you. I know you had mentioned something about either limiting the amount of reservations they can make, or if they cancel, they would end up getting dinged for some sort of service fee for not doing it. So hopefully, they'll discuss that at the next meeting. Thank you. Any other liaison reports? I believe we still need a couple of liaisons. I know that we had had a discussion. Representative Massett said she would be the Board of Ed, City of Groton, Town of, Town Council Liaison, but we haven't gotten any meetings scheduled. Hopefully, we can sooner, before the term's out. There's also a need for the Athletic Fields Task Force, as Town Manager Burke mentioned. If you have interest in that, watch the video on the last, it's on the Groton Municipal...
Yeah, GMTV on YouTube.
Okay, and if it's something that you're interested and passionate in, please let me know so we can put you on as a liaison for the RTM. There's another one, too, that is going to be upcoming, I believe. It has to do with the town-owned properties, Groton Heights and also Pleasant Valley. Based on the language that the Town Council approved, there will be members of the RTM that can be seated into these work groups. So if there's any folks that are interested in, on the RTM that would like to participate in either the Groton Heights one or the Pleasant Valley one, I'd like to just reach out to me or talk to me directly, and we'll try to get you on there. I believe we're trying to get two people for each group. So, and I'd like it to be a little diverse, whether it's one person that's from the district where it pertains to, and maybe one from the outside, so that we can have a little bit of diverse thought on reuse for those properties. Okay? Any other liaisons? No. Okay, item K, budget discussions. Is there any budget discussion?
I'll just mention, we just started our preliminary, getting things organized this week unbelievably.
Budget book will be on us before you know it, in March or April. I know, I see the look on folks' faces. It can be digital, though. You don't have to carry that thing around. All right. Any other budget discussion? Okay, and any other business? Yes, Representative Perella?
I forgot, I just talked into my phone. I forgot to, when Leanne was talking, there, I don't know if this was mentioned by the Town Manager, on the date of October 17th, from 5:45 PM to 7:15 PM, at the Thrive 55, there is a meeting from the Groton community about affordable housing, and that may be related to what you were saying, but it is going to be that date. I just remembered we had an email on that.
Thank you. I totally forgot to mention that.
All right. Any other, other business? All right. Seeing none, we're going to move on to item M. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion was moved by Massett, seconded by Adams. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Sayonara. Okay, thank you for coming, and we will see you next November. Yeah, next November. The next one, this one, it's coming.
No, I like the next one.